Yes.
Roll call. Counsel Dean. Counsel Martin.
Present.
Counsel Baker.
Present.
Counsel Wheeler.
Here.
And Counsel President Thomas.
Here. And I'm going to press what you uh read into the record, be more than.
Resolution number fifty-one dash fifteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the district advisory council of the Cuyahoga County General Health District for public health services for the city of East Cleveland, Ohio for the year of twenty sixteen in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars or three dollars and ninety-two cents per capita to be paid in equal semi-annual installments of thirty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents and declaring an emergency.
I want to say inter-office memorandum. So you're reading from this? Inter-office memorandum.
Resolution fifty-one fifteen. Alright, are we on a special council meeting? No, we're in general review.
Baker added.
Here's a stack on right here sweetheart.
Oh, right there.
The director reflects that um the um
Law Director.
Law Director.
Prosecutor has entered the room in the meeting.
Here.
Okay, um correct the hand means we have yet to read into the record uh the res- resolution.
Fifty-one fifteen.
Fifty-one fifteen. You want to give uh for the audio station uh information on the particular.
Oh, okay, um yeah, oh, I didn't, I didn't bring that one down. Okay, I have it upstairs, uh well, annually, we have a contract with um the General Health District uh with the district advisory council of the Cuyahoga County General Health District in order to provide uh services to the cities, uh citizens and uh the entire amount is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and that's three dollars and ninety-two cents per person and we would like to pay them in equal semi-annual installments of thirty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Who sponsored this, sponsored uh by, requested by Harry Norton, sponsored by Councilman Thomas Wheeler. Uh, Councilman Wheeler, what you got to say about?
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, uh I know over the years, we've had some involvement with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, is this the same thing? Now, what I'm not, what's kind of throwing me off here is this a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the district advisory council, now that's something different. For me with the Cuyahoga County with the district council, what is that? Explain that to me.
Okay, I'll bring it, I'll bring the paperwork from my. Thirty seconds.
My finance director is here, good to see you this evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good to be seen.
Good to have a champion in place.
Yes, sir.
He should know what this is.
This is mayor.
He's not here. I don't know. Are you leaving to go get him?
I'm sorry.
We're, we're on resolution fifty-one dash fifteen. Here, Jack. I think this, this is a common thing we've done for years, but this, this Cuyahoga County, we were endeavoring into a discussion and one of the co- one of my colleagues asked for this one.
We do this every year. Cuyahoga County Board of Health uh assesses every community for health services. It's based on um three dollars and ninety-two cents per resident. And what they do is they provide county health services specifically. They provide um mosquito abatement if there's, if there's a problem. Couple of years ago, when we had the West Nile virus, they went around and sprayed a lot of communities where they knew there was mosquito problems, um they inspect every restaurant or food service um business that's in the city. Which includes the senior center, I think they did inspections when we were serving meals there. So anywhere that there's food being served, they provide those inspections and uh I don't know the whole, from a right, that's essentially what they do, is they charge us for providing health services.
Okay, well, Johnson, we were kind of aware of that, but what we weren't sure about is something new that we hadn't seen before. We've been dealing with them for years. This, what is the district advisory council, that's something we're not familiar with, I'm not familiar with it. Even though May's goes back to when we've been dealing with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, do our health for the city of East Cleveland, so I'm not familiar, what is the district advisory council?
Oh, okay, um, we've been doing this since, let's see, I saw this in two thousand seven. And uh so we've been doing this since two thousand seven. And uh that is like the governing board, the advisory board to the uh Board of Health, Cuyahoga County Board of Health, and that's where you make the contracts to do this. And here's the contract itself. I think I've included it.
Have you looked over the contract?
Yes, yeah, it's quite standard, that's, that's what it's been every year. That, I guess, I don't know, maybe it wasn't presented to council or something, but it's done every year, yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, the contract, I'm alright, I just have never seen it and we can move on, but my, my reluctance is I never saw on all the things we've been doing over the years, why, I never saw a district advisory council on this legislation.
Your signature is on the one, two thousand seven.
Okay, okay, no, but I, that, I don't know if that was in, on it, you know what I mean?
I just been twelve years, uh, it's been a
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm alright, good, okay.
I want you all, uh Councilman Wheeler is recommending that this go to the uh agenda for uh Wednesday.
You sure about that, Wheeler? Okay, I'm alright.
Council meeting is Wednesday.
It's Wednesday because of election.
Because of the election.
Election, December third.
This is a special.
This is general review.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I spoke my attorney, goes on the special. Is that where we?
Is it? Is this a?
No, this is the agenda.
We waiting on the port people again, see?
Moving right along. Uh at five thirty, we're supposed to go into our regular uh special council meeting, is that the only one we have on the agenda? I will accept a motion to uh close the agenda review out.
I moved as we adjourned the general review meeting. Yeah, that was basically it.
Oh, I'm sorry, his remarks in the public. On agenda items for uh the uh general review, I'm sorry, I missed out on it. Please let's back up. Please forgive me, audience.
Counsel, I ask you all to understand that everything that comes in line, order and items, you guys really put an iron fist on it because we need to know where money is going and we need to know where it's, what it's going to generate. Why should we sit at home and still ask you all the same questions, where is the money going? If you're not going to use the money for what it's for, don't ask.
I appreciate that. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I got one more thing, I got one, I got one.
Snow is getting ready to come and we need some salt and we're going to need um
Trucks.
Trucks. We're going to need help for our streets, still got homes all in the streets and we still going to need help to fix those potholes. It's so big that you just cover them like it's normal, it's not normal to cover potholes and when somebody can move it and it can cause a great big accident. I never heard the mayor come out one time saying about the accident that the police did, you know? I mean, you know, this is like getting ridiculous and um a lot of things that's going on, like this meeting right here, y'all act like y'all don't really know what y'all doing, y'all playing it off real good, but y'all really don't know what y'all doing because she could type up that stuff and y'all believe it. You should already have the information in front of you before she, she shouldn't even have, the law director shouldn't have the information that you already need, you should already have the same information she got. And there's a lot going on, it is um winter time. Do you feel me? And it's time for us to know what direction we going with the money.
Alright, that's a nice question. Thank you, I appreciate your comment.
Go ahead, you're on the speaking, I'll have to go.
No, go ahead, I'll have to go.
Come on, O'Mays, come on.
Let me ask the question in reference to are we advertising that we have this contract here, here for the people that qualify for it? And we paying this money, I, I don't hear anything about and secondly I'm still concerned and I know winter is around the corner, as I was just elucidated here in reference to that. And with all of, I'm not somebody, well, I am concerned about the salt, but I'm concerned about the truck holes. I, someone just talked with me yesterday and even today on Terrace, they're saying, why don't you close that section here? Because it's terraced, it just, it's ridiculous. And then for this council to sit and I don't blame you for part of it. You are our representative, you represent us, the citizens of this community. And you're not demanding that something be done with the streets in the city. It does not speak very well for you as well. And every time something come down from administration, nine times out of ten, you guys pass it. And that's why he isn't, he never is here. I don't know what, we supposedly have a full-time mayor, not a part-time mayor. He's not to hold any other position, that's what the charters mandate. And he's not here to take care of his business. I can understand that the law director or the finance director sits in for him sometime, I know sometime we all become ill or something come up that we cannot attend, but this is regular for him. And then when he does come, he come in, stay a hot second, get out and leave. We have a full-time mayor supposed to be here to do his due diligence. And where I, what can, kind of concern me with the council, as I said, you keep passing stuff. You put it on hold or whatever and demand that he comes and elucidate on some of the stuff that he has negotiated. Doesn't have any employees here or the department heads to discuss those, those, those matters or what have you. And you just sit up here to place basically in the blind and pass the stuff that you're not totally, fully cognizant of. And I don't even know whether they attend any of your general review meetings. The law director, the finance director and the mayor supposed to be at all council meetings. Committee meetings as well, those three individuals. Whereas they can tell you if there's some legal, if there's something about finances, come to the finance director.
Mr. O'Mays, your time is up. Uh, response of the
George Brothers four four one two news, I just want to go on the record with a couple of things. Woke up this morning, a gentleman, I guess he bonded out in this jail downstairs, decided to give me a call and he called me early this morning telling me that there's roaches and rats and that they don't have any hygiene, that they're not allowing them to take showers and this is downright wrong, we went through this before, folks, we went through this back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve where the people weren't allowed to take showers. And that's just one of the things I want to quickly talk about, the fact that people are down in that jail experiencing stuff that if that was animals down there I would guarantee there'd be a protest line out there, I guarantee there'd be live trucks out there complaining about it. Maybe that's what we need to switch it to, say there's animals down there because you're treating them just like animals. Number two thing, the mess that Coach Hines, retired coach Hines took his, his time and the alumni to do was much appreciated. Now today Mike Riley, who owns the Noble Road dump site and his crew are down here. And I go to film the site and he says that this whole street is shut down. So they called the police and the police couldn't tell me who gave authority to shut down a city street. So the police were carding me and checking me over and threatening me, uh they were going to take me to jail and everything else, it'll be on four four one one two news. But I was wondering, did you guys know that, that Mike Riley was going to take that stuff from those streets down to Noble Road, did you know that? Did any of you guys were aware of that? They took, took it in, in, Mike, Mike Riley, he, he brought all his trucks, his entire crew, I don't lie, it's on four four one one two, everything. And they loaded all that stuff that Coach Hines had done, he did the right thing and then Mike Riley came down there, loaded his trucks up and took it down to Noble Road, they didn't need any more dump, they didn't need no more garbage, but they did. And I'm just wondering because the police officer said that someone gave the authority to shut down those roads. And I just, I don't, I didn't know if you guys knew about it, I'm sure you probably had some kind of meeting to gave them, gave them to do it. But the police officer said that he didn't, he was ordered, and I don't want to push him because this is one of my favorite sergeant, he's one of my favorite guys. But he was ordered, I could see, I could see in his eyes, he was ordered to do something wrong that he didn't appreciate, but he did it because he did his job. And I'm just wondering what you guys, you know, the people in Noble Road aren't happy, they haven't gotten the full gist of this, but they will. I'm just wondering if you guys knew about it, that's all.
Response, is there any more residents uh speaking uh to?
I, I got a lot of stuff to speak about, but primarily right now I just want to speak about like my neighborhood where I grew up from, like Angela, me and Allen Dale down that way. Now, when y'all ride through there, yeah, that's, that's where I grew up at, still right there, Pan's still right there, I own a house right there, still right there. I'm talking posse two. Giant Walmart, five and nine, Giant Walmart. Pearl Walmart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, from the beginning, right, alright, alright. And my thing is, anybody ride through there, know that them people don't live down there, right? Come on, so I mean, we as youngsters get took to jail and this, that and the other and shuffle around and all this stuff, but why? When the police ride through there, it's not, it's nothing being done, I mean, if they know they can chill out there, why wouldn't you chill out there? And if you knock that off, then that's going to knock the other stuff riffraff that's going off right along with everything else, you know what I'm saying? So for them to allow for these, we say whores to walk around the street flat out, you know what I'm saying? And everybody know what's going on, and it's still going on and it's big going on and everybody know what's going on, say nothing, dude. No, I'm dead serious, I'm not laughing, man. When my peoples have company come through the street and you got whores running up to their car when they try to turn the corner, I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. And I'm, I'm looking at everybody up here, like I say, I, y'all don't know me, I, I, you know what I'm saying, I grew up, I didn't do wrong, I done done right, you know what I'm saying? With that right there, I don't like that. I don't like that. Get that in the bud, man, and that can lift a lot of other stuff in the bud too, I don't like that.
Is there anybody else that is speaking uh from the residents about um any pardon?
It's not only Allen Dale, the Colombers from Colomer all the way down to Iverson, that's all it is.
Pardon me, may I uh speak and say that in the next in the next row, the council and the uh mayor or his designee will respond to uh the questions or the remarks that has been made by the public. So, having said that, uh is there, you're the designee going to speak on the behalf of the mayor?
I know, we have state authorization in the jail and we will certainly be um researching whether or not there are rats and roaches in the jail and whether or not inmates are allowed to take showers, that's a great concern to us because for many, many, many years on top prisons, rates, classes, that is absolutely not acceptable. Also, uh with reference to Mr. Struthers, we're going to certainly address that in the morning. Now with reference to Mr. James Womack's concern, uh I have Allen Dale, Colomer, Tenovo and Ivanhoe that allegedly some um prostitution is going on and I will talk to the detectives about that.
Is there?
We have two new salt uh trucks. We, we have two snowplow trucks and uh I think that um Director Johnson is aware of the need for salt and he's doing all he can to make sure that we have as much as we can afford. The paddles on Terrace, we're working with the um sewer district, there's some defects in their um infrastructure there that caused a leakage so that no amount of filling or cold patch will remedy the situation. Uh I know my car has, has some injuries to, on Terrace too, so we um are working, it's, it's, it's just not a situation that's easily remedied, but uh right now, the administration and the service department are working with the um with the uh sewer district and the water district to make sure, well, to see what they will contribute.
Excuse me, can I speak?
You are?
Maureen Johnson, I grew up in East Cleveland also.
Pardon?
You live in East Cleveland, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, you can speak if you are in
I wanted to correct your little picture, I work for the ward department, City of Cleveland Ward Department. So I know about sinkholes and things of that nature. Sewer has nothing to do with that. If a sinkhole is going to sink, it's going to sink in one specific spot, not all over the street like it is on Terrace. That comes from faulty material and whomever had, came over here and did the streets from the start, the material was no good. This is how you get potholes, just like on Bender. I fixed a sewer on Bender when I worked for the city of East Cleveland before Cleveland took over. It comes from faulty backfilling, comes from faulty material. You guys are not buying the proper material, it's all because you want to get the fake material and somebody is lining their pockets to do other things with it. Just like it is with the prostitutes that's going on, just like it is with the snowplowing that's going on, just like it is with the potholes that's going on. If you guys take care of your business like you're supposed to in that order, instead of pushing this behind to take care of the small thing that doesn't mean anything, that nobody, you guys laugh about it, then this place wouldn't be the way it is now. The building of Terrace Towers across the street from Huron Road, I played in that building. To see that building right now, how you just let everybody come in there and tear that building down, it's disgusting. I got a sister that lives in Texas right now, is asking me to please send her a picture of the building that she had my nephew in. I don't want to send it to her, but I'm going to do it because she begged me for three months now. And when I leave here, I'm going to take a picture of it and I'm going to put it on Facebook. And like this man said, the thing that Mr. Hines did, why must you put something on social media to get the community of East Cleveland, the people of East Cleveland, yeah, we have to tear it down, but we here to help build it back up. But the thing is this, you got a man on social media to put something up here about cleaning up the streets of East Cleveland, when you guys are the board members. I didn't say nothing about it on Facebook and I look at Facebook every day, all day. Nobody name was up here at all and I know every last one of y'all, that's my man right there, we grew up together. So you laugh like it's funny, but let it be a pothole in your front of your yard or you got some prostitutes in front of your house talking to your son or your daughters, you wouldn't laugh then. And it's, it's, it's serious.
I have something to say about that.
Just like the mayor, the mayor's not here, he's never here, he's never here. And see, the mayor don't care, why? Because he's not from here. He don't even live in the city of East Cleveland, he's not from here, so it don't mean nothing to him. And you guys should look at it as, as men, period. To sit up here and let this man know, outside of the mayor and your occupation, bro, this is what's going on in our city. They don't do that, they don't do that. So all that stuff y'all blowing up people's butt, I mean, come on now. Come on now, I'm not saying per se that y'all doing it, but I'm just, it's been going on too long. Too long. Too long.
Thank you for representing your mark. Madam prosecutor.
Um, the mayor had a meeting this afternoon when he was here on site, he asked me to sit in and take notes and we will review my notes and he will uh address your um your concerns, just like I as a messenger, as a designee, am told to do so that he can uh be the representative that you elected him to be. Now with reference to Terrace and the material, if the material on um at uh Superior and, and Terrace is the same material that's at Marloson Terrace then why is it that Marloson Terrace is not sinking in the way the material, you're found a one thirty-eight fifty-five?
You want me to answer that question?
Pardon me, we will not have disruption or, or disorder. The, at this particular time, the prosecutor, madam prosecutor, who is standing in for the mayor, is giving her version. And whatever else is going on, if it's wrong, then she will find out. And whatever else is going on, if it's wrong, then she will find out and have it corrected. And please be, um, polite enough to give her the respect, so that she can finish speaking.
Okay, but can I ask her a question though?
Sir, I gave you that time.
What it is is, there is something, like I said, irregular in the infrastructure. We don't, we're not sure whether or not it's water or sewer. But both entities are being called in and interacted with in order to address the problem. The material is the material from Terrace and Superior to Terrace and Noble, okay? So it's the same material and if there wasn't something very, very, uh, wrong, then the, um, that situation in front of one thirty-eight fifty-five would not be happening. Because it's the same material all the way down. So that's my response, thank you.
Uh, we will now, um, go to the marks of the council in response to, uh, the citizens' concern. Councilman Marks?
Yeah. Thank you for coming out. This is the deal, the number one thing is finance. We don't have the money, you know. You brought up the issue about prostitution, I walk past them all, all the time, I walk a lot, I'm out on the street at night. I stay on Euclid, right near Shaw, I see them all the time, I see them down Colomber, I see them all the time. If I see them, please see. You talk about this building over here, it's, was ransacked, this council complained for months about it, to the administration. All we can do is complain to the administration. And it got so bad, apparently, they told the, the police officers to just go past and let them do what they want to do. It's so blatant, it's so obvious, there's only so much we can do. The mayor's a full-time employee, like Mr. Omays said, with a staff of four hundred and some people, used to be two hundred and some people. They respond to what he tell them to respond to, and he tell them not to respond, they don't. I don't want to tell you how many police we have on the shift, okay? But the priorities, when you hear the police, and I've been hearing this for years. Shootings and murders take priority and other stuff is secondary. Right now, we don't really have the police force to deal with a whole lot of this, we don't. They recently cleaned up the jail, we have been complaining about the jail for years. They recently cleaned up the jail, they painted and did some other things, I didn't know that, uh, uh, they don't have sanitation and all that down there, because we complained about it for years and, and, and I'll say this to the, this, the police chief right now. They did go down there and do something, because I went and took a tour. But if you don't have the resources and we don't have the money, what can we do? Potholes, no one's complaining so much about the potholes than me. Mr. Struthers has been a leader on this situation on Noble, everybody on this council been over there. The administration, the mayor was there, last time I was there, the mayor was there, everybody was there. And the issue was put there, they said they was gonna put up some type of barrier, Struthers would confirm that and all like that, but they haven't done anything. So, so what do you do, okay? We have, no, the citizens have, you have, went out three times to recall Norton and it's come up short. It's on you. If you, if you're just satisfied with this, go get rid of us, okay? Get rid of us, it's, it's fine, it's fine. But we have tried to do as much as we can. We, we do this thing out of our hearts, because we only get a hundred dollars every two weeks, we ain't had a raise in thirty years. So our heart is in this, you know this, Omays, our heart is in this. We hear this and you, and you're telling the truth. But the day-to-day operation, the problem we confirm this with you, because she talks about it all the time, is with the administration. These are the full-time employees, we legislate, we legislate and appropriate, we give him money every year to run the city. Okay, salaries, I'll say this, if he cuts some, down some of the high salaries some of these people are making doing nothing, we can fill in some of these holes. But it's on him, okay? We, we have the fiscal, the state in here looking at, at the spending. And he's, and basically, he snubs his nose at them, he does what he wants to do. Now, there's a group out there right now trying to recall him, they're out there right now, they got the salary to turn it in. If they come up, this is the third time he come up short, so we hear this. But if you don't exercise your right of franchise, if you don't sign these petitions to, to bring something new in here, now, what is he doing? This is what he's doing, I got a letter a week ago talking about merging with Cleveland, talking about something happened forty years ago, okay? I issue ain't going back forty years, it's about management. How can we be broke as we have, we got, uh, two people that's always making almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? He's looking out for who he wants to look out for, and as long as you sit back and take it, that's what's gonna happen. Everybody around here wants change and wants things to be better. There's no reason why we should be in the situation we in right now, if he were to stay within his budget, if, if, you can confirm, if you go to four four one one news dot com, I would tell you, I've been speaking about this thing for years, I, I projected this was gonna happen, because I said, you're spending too much money, man. And he just spent, he's spending hard his friends and his buddies. Okay, then, when he came up against, up against it, now he trying to make changes, it's too late. Now he's pushing merger and that mixation, that's crazy. What can Cleveland do for us, they got as many paddles as we do, what can they do for us? Not a damn thing, so it's on you, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.